Just a door or two.
We are ready.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for January 26, 2022. Bill, after six o'clock, we're here in the city council chambers at 345 High Street, of course, in Hamilton. Roll call, please.
Mayor, before the roll call, could we get a motion to excuse Councilmember Nab?
Sure. Makes more sense to do that. I'll send the motion. Do we excuse Councilmember Nab for reasons known to council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Now do the roll call, please.
Moeller.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Lauer.
Present.
See, we're still offering a prayer by Vice Mayor Eric Pullman, called by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking you for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Lord, as always, we ask you to watch over our firefighters, police officers, and all first responders, that they may return home safely after each day. We ask you, Lord, to watch over all our athletes this weekend, keep them healthy, and let them show good sportsmanship. Go Bengals, Hude, and amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you maybe standing for a minute if you would? I'm going to silence for former mayor and Anthony who passed away this past weekend. Thank you. Okay, we have some really good special presentations this evening. First one we have, it has to do with the After Hours Media Clip, which has to do with the program that Councilmember Lauer knows about. Can you please give us an introduction before we play that clip, sir?
This is one of the things, and I'm very proud to be a Hamilton City school teacher, that goes on in some of our buildings. Two years ago, prior to the pandemic, Jesse Wisebrot and Derek Bresnan put together a program that was after-schools hours to help support some of the students who were struggling. It turned out to be something unbelievable. They included a basketball game, I believe, which many of the staff members participated in. And many of the struggling students got a lot of work done, caught up on a lot of projects that they were behind on, and it made for some successful times. When the pandemic hit, we were unable to do this. Derek went to Ty Smallwood, who's the new principal at the Hamilton freshman building, and they put together the program again, and the participation this time was unbelievable. We had so many kids, we had to call in more support staff for this up-and-coming one tomorrow. I believe they did dodgeball at the first one, and I'm not sure what they're doing tomorrow, but the dodgeball game included staff members, and it was a great time, well-attended, and one of the most positive things I've seen at the freshman building in a long time.
Ready to roll it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We really wanted to start this program. It's called After Hour. Our study in ball, because we really want our students to be on track for graduation. We looked at a lot of the research, and it really points to that freshman year as pivotal to student success. So every day on the announcements, kind of a broken record at this point, but we say four-core out-the-door, because we want all of our students to achieve those four-core credits. This was an opportunity for them to come here, study, be productive, earn prizes, have food, in an environment that has certified staff members that can help them out.
You know, I think the student bodies is devoted to the school. I think that they have bought in into what we have preached to them in the classroom, and I think they're, not only do they want to get the work done, but they like having a good time, and they kind of buy into what we're selling, so that it works out well.
So it's really been successful. As you can see, we're bursting at the seams. This program is growing, and we have a lot of staff here on-site with our four-core out-the-door shirts, and we're really here just to support our students and do the best that we can.
A lot of the kids at our church go to Hamilton schools, and we want to give to the community in a way that helps those kids. And we heard about this event, and that they were in need of some help, and so we devoted all we can to sow into that.
And really, this just shows you that not only are the students dedicated to their success, but the staff, the community, New Life Community Church has donated prizes for our students to attend these events, and we just really want to wrap our arms around these freshmen to make sure they know they're supported, and that we're going to get them on track for high school, because it's just so important for their education.
This is a great event, and it was well-attended that time. We had more students sign up this time tomorrow. I think it's important, I would like for anybody, anybody's more than welcome, for you guys to come up and join in. It would be great for the kids to see us, so.
Is it tomorrow is the next one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What time would that be then, sir?
I believe it's right after school.
Right, cool. So four-core out-the-door and dodgeball.
In the.
You can't beat that.
The statistics behind being successful your freshman year are really, really telling. And Ty Smallwood has done a great job of promoting that.
Well, thank you for that presentation and making us all aware of that, because that is a great program. Okay. Lieutenant Oakley. I believe you have a presentation, then we have one for you.
So Scott Scormesi, Director of Public Safety. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Oakley. He, this is long overdue. The mayor and I discussed this last year, and then with COVID, and things start moving fast, and you forget about it. But Dave's a member of Ohio Task Force One, has been for a long time. Every time that they get deployed, I get an email of daily updates on what they do, and it's just extraordinary. So I've asked Dave to put a little presentation together, and he's done that, and here's Lieutenant Oakley.
Thank you for having me. I feel humbled being here, really appreciate it. Picture that you see in front of you is from Hurricane Matthew impacted the, excuse me, the Lumberton area in Fayetteville. So we were deployed there, I believe it was 2017, 2016, 2016, excuse me. It was a hurricane that we chased down to the Florida border. We were held there, rerouted to Charleston, South Carolina, which we then got rerouted to North Carolina. I-95 was five feet underwater, so we had to make our way through state highways to get to Fort Bragg, where we were billeted. We had a night mission immediately that night. My retired lieutenant, Lieutenant Ray Smith, in the back, was with me. He joined the team when I did in 2003. He went to work that night. I went to work that morning and to relieve them. We evacuated, we had a town of 1,500 people in this town that needed to be evacuated because the rivers between the Cape Fear River and the Lumberton River were going over the banks. So this picture is, picture of just removing a woman from our boat, from the water to the shore. So, next slide, please. This was from this year. We were, on June 30th, we were deployed as a federal team, the state of Ohio. Ohio Task Force One is one of 28 federal teams in the National Response System Framework. We were sent to the city of Miami, Surfside Beach, which is just north of Miami Beach, for a building collapse that had already happened five days prior. We arrived on day six. Two federal teams in the state of Florida are both located in Miami, the city of Miami and Miami Metro. They had been working for five days, continuous, realized, along with state teams, smaller teams, that were assisting, that they were just overwhelmed. At that time, the information given to us was about 150 people missing. That number shrank down to about 199 or 98, I believe. So we went to work. This is the first day when we got there, and this is facing the ocean, so you're with the ocean to your back, you're looking at this building. That portion of the building was free standing still. We had monitors on both adjacent condos that were watching that building for movement, which it was continuing to move a little bit for the first two days that we were there. So that was a little nerve-wracking, trying not to think about the obvious, why we were working underneath it. But that, when we walked back to the beach access road, this was the first thing that we saw. And it was, to say it was overwhelming is an understatement. Next slide, please. So I joined Ohio Task Force One with Lieutenant Smith in 2003, after completing a rescue tech school with Cincinnati State, which was a nine-month process of all the major rescue disciplines, from high-angle rope rescue, confined space, trench collapse, building collapse, swift water rescue, machine and auto extrication, and then lost person search, as well as some additional classes that you see up there on the board, some search classes, and then went through another rigorous 80-hour course with Lieutenant FEMA Structural Collapse Technician class, that was more intensified in FEMA-specific with the equipment and what we do. 2012, I was promoted to a team manager for Ohio Task Force One. In that same year, I deployed as a team manager for the hazmat team to Hurricane Sandy, where we worked out of a joint base outside of Trenton, New Jersey, for Dix, Maguire Lakehurst, and did search operations in Seaside, which is where the boardwalk is in New Jersey. And then we continued two days of search, basically wellness checks in the Brooklyn, Borough of Brooklyn, in Garrison Beach, and Flatbush. Next slide, please. This picture is also from the Surfside collapse. I chose this picture, and there's some pictures that are integrated into this presentation, just of kind of the scale, the size. It would take approximately, we worked 50-hour work cycles. I was on day ops, we started day ops at noon, we worked till midnight, we did 50-minute work rotations, wearing full APR with canisters, because of the air quality, with 30-minute rest periods. We did about 10 of those in a day. I lost 27 pounds in two weeks down there. It was a little hot in July to be working. But this, just the picture of it, with everything that was going on, we had two large 250-ton cranes that were flying out, pieces of concrete and heavy machinery over top of us. We were running cut torches, running steel-cutting saws, and most of the actual removal was by hand, because the concrete was just a poor quality. So it was a lot of hand digging and filling buckets. We filled on one day day ops, which was two squads of seven, so 14 total people for Ohio. We moved 55,000 pounds of concrete by hand, just to give you an idea of the work that was being done there. And I think this picture kind of, when I look at it, kind of encapsulates a lot of what was going on there. So, next slide, please. Since my involvement with the task force, I've been fortunate enough to become an instructor for not only hazmat, but also swift water for the FEMA system. So we do most of the education for our team, but it does allow us to teach outside of our state and our team with other federal teams. My affiliation with the team and the training that I've received, not only with the city of Hamilton, but through the task force with Ohio, has allowed me to continue to teach on my off days for Cincinnati State College, as well as Bowling Green University, primarily with rescue training. And I teach with other members of the task force, which, kind of that continuation of the younger group that is coming into the fire service, so that we're kind of reaching them with not only the technical aspect of the education, but our real-life experiences. I've been fortunate enough to deploy with, on 11 different hurricanes. Notable ones were Hurricane Sandy, Matthew that you saw a picture of, Hurricane Harvey, which I have some photos of, which was just an unbelievable water event. Hurricane Harvey hitting the city of Houston, which has three and a half million people in the city proper, six and a half in the metro, dropped 65 inches of rain in 96 hours. So in a four-day period, I tell people that aren't familiar with that kind of rainfall, that's Bible rain. That's rain that we don't see. In the Cincinnati metro area, we see flash flooding, and places around Anderson, right around two to three inches of rainfall in an hour. This was averaging between four and five inches of rain an hour, and it just didn't stop. I've been on two, deployed on two different tornadoes, one in the city of Dayton, the day after Memorial, actually Memorial Day. It was a workday for me. I woke up to start my day, come down to pour a cup of coffee, look at my phone, and it said respond to the warehouse for the tornadoes in Dayton. Got on, put the television on, and saw that the Dayton metro area, just north of the city, had been hit by what appeared to be a pretty devastating tornado. That was eye-opening, just to look at that kind of devastation, which we normally see in a hurricane, but this is much more concentrated, but also a little bit more violent. The winds of most of the hurricanes are anywhere from 115 to maybe 150 mile an hour. This type of tornado is 200 mile an hour winds, where you have trees that are just bent in half, or telephone poles that are snapped in half. Awesome display of power. This past December, two weeks before Christmas, I was redeployed with the task force to the state of Kentucky. We drove, we got deployed at six o'clock at night. We left our warehouse at 11 o'clock in the Dayton airport area. We drove through the night and arrived at Murray State University at 0500 hours, and went to work by 0630, 0700 hours, the first day. We split in Maze Field, and then in Dawson Creek, which we then continued for two additional days. And then one building collapsed, which was the Surfside collapse, which was pretty intense. Next slide, please. This is a picture from Dawson Springs, just one of many photos. These are not trailers, these are homes that, much like our homes here in the city of Hamilton, that we would see on any neighborhood, wood-framed homes that were, the roofs were ripped off, in some cases the walls were blown out, trees, vehicles thrown into it, just a awesome display of Mother Nature. We went down there with some pretty grim news en route, that there was up to maybe 150 people missing, that the death toll from the candle factory was going to be much higher than that. So we were wrapping our heads around that in transit for half the team. We had gone to Surfside, so we knew what that was. Going to Miami, we didn't know. We tried to prep ourselves, you know, praying a little bit en route, a little bit of self-reflection, but nothing to, really could prepare you for what we saw down there. So in this case, we're going to Kentucky, we had a good idea what we might be getting into. Luckily, we didn't make any body recoveries. Most of the people, most of the deaths were concentrated in the candle factory itself, and a lot of the people had self-rescued. And the state of Kentucky just didn't have a mechanism in place for people to report in safe, as far as the state goes. So we were conducting street by street, house by house. This is where the governor, Dawson Springs is where the governor of Kentucky's from. We went actually by his house. So, next slide, please. Through my involvement and support to the city of Hamilton, I've been fortunate. I kind of pinch myself. In my fire career, I never thought I would work alongside of organizations such as the FDNY, New York Fire Department, New York City Fire Department, Drug Enforcement Agency, the FBI, DHS agents, another branch of federal agents, Border Patrol. And in Kentucky, our second day, we had people from ODA, which I had never heard of. Prior to that, it's the Operational Detachment Alpha, which encompasses this nation's special forces units. In this case, they were the Green Berets from Fort Campbell. Because of the Articles 24 and 26 of the Constitution, they were not in uniforms, so they were given the option by their commander to either do two hours of language training, followed by two hours of combat PT, or they could volunteer their time to come assist us, and they chose wisely, and they came with us, which was pretty neat. I really, I can't say enough how fortunate I feel to have the support that I've had my entire career by the city of Hamilton and the city of Hamilton Fire Department. A lot of the membership on the team is, it's touch and go, on whether or not they're going to be able to deploy, depending on the financial situation with the city. COVID has been a huge impact, where like the city of Cincinnati, they weren't able to deploy anybody to Surfside because of that. With the city, that's never been a question. Through the fire chiefs, going all the way back to Chief Shutey, to the present chief, it's always been, if they need you and your roster, go. Just call your shift commander, let them know that you're not going to be at your next shift, and let, keep us updated with information. And I feel fortunate for that. It's just, it's, it's nice to know that you have that support, that you don't have to, hold on, I have to wait, I have to call my chief, or my chief then has to call the team manager, or make sure it's okay to go. It's always been a green light. If they need you, go. We've had, in the history of the team, our involvement with the team, with the city of Hamilton, we've had five members, myself, Lieutenant Smith, as well as three other individuals that have been a part of the team. It really, that relationship, it's hard to quantify, but that relationship with FEMA and the networking, not only done within the state of Ohio, so all the biggest departments in Ohio, but the people that I've met, Chief Downey from FDNY, whose father Ray Downey was a legend in the fire service, that was killed at the North Tower when it collapsed. Just having those people and those contacts, if I have a question, an example would be when the Ebola virus hit, and we had a nurse travel back from Dallas to Cleveland, suddenly all the fire departments, and ours was no different, what are we going to do if we have Ebola? Let me call you back in 10 minutes. I immediately call and text, city Columbus, city Cincinnati, what do you guys have? Can you send it to me? I'm sending it to you right now. Emailing, so we had a template to work off of. That type of network has been invaluable. The trainings that we have received through outside agencies, myself and Lieutenant Smith, that we've been able to bring back to our department and our city, I feel has been a huge value to the department and the citizens because of that involvement. It all kind of starts there. So I'm very grateful for that. Next slide, please. This is another picture. This one really shows the heavy equipment. You know, it was lifted there by a crane, so when the equipment would go, the spotters for the cranes would blow the whistles nonstop, until everybody stopped working, would look up and acknowledge that they were flying heavy equipment over top, and they were putting them on top of the piles to kind of pull stuff out. We did targeted searches for the first week, where we were kind of digging based on maps, where we thought the condos were, and where, how many people that we knew were in the condos, although those numbers weren't completely accurate. And then once we got to that point, and because there was half of the population in the condo was of the Jewish faith, we were in rescue operations, not recovery, because of their faith. They have 48 hours to put bodies into the ground. So we were debriefed, not only in that, but any, any blood on any clothing that was touching the body also had to be recovered with the body because of their customs. So it was, it was very surreal. We had rabbis praying over loudspeakers while we were working at times. It was, it was just, it was very surreal after the two-week period. It was just one of those things where you think back, excuse me, to, did this really happen? And it did, but it was, it was very, very impressive. This picture shows that, so. Next slide, please. Because of the city of Hamilton and other cities like our city and their support, FEMA has this resource. These 28 teams, these federal teams would not exist without cities like ours that support members like myself and Lieutenant Smith and other members from our department to be a part of this. This is all volunteer to join the team. You're not, you're not assigned to it. You volunteer to become a member of this team and these teams. So it's very important, and I felt like this is really important for you guys to hear. I said to Chiefs Scormesi and Chief Mercer when I was in Surfside, make sure, and they told me the mayor's aware of where you're at and what you're doing. I said, please thank them, but also let them know, not just the mayor, but all of you, you guys are a part of that, I'm just an extension of that. Your presence in Miami was made known through my participation, and that's important for you guys to know that. We had Israelis that had flown from Tel Aviv, a 12-person team from the IDF that also worked there. They had some very high-tech computer telemetry that they were able to really narrow down how the building fell, where the condos would sit in relation to the rubble pile that assisted us in a lot of the recoveries. They were all recoveries, there was no rescue. And the first rescue was done the night of the collapse. It was a 12-year-old from the parking garage. So we knew when we drove down there that we were going for a very tough mission of recovery. Ohio Task Force One recovered 19 bodies from that pile. I was in Squad Seven, we recovered five of those 19 bodies. I already spoke to the operational periods. The heat was not our friend, it was a heat index of 105, we had, or higher, we had three days that the heat index was over 110. I took two IV bags on, I think, the fifth day I was there on a break. Just could not get enough fluids in, took some chilled IVs and felt completely better after that. Next slide, please. I do want to say that outside of all the training that I've received with FEMA, the genesis of my training came from the city. Chief Moore offered me a job in 2000 and said, I'm offering you a career, not a job. I want a 25-year commitment, and I was eager to get that job. And I was provided a lot of training. I was sent to the Ohio Fire Academy. I was sponsored through all of my training with the FEMA system, as well as a lot of technical rescue training that I received here within the department, within the city, for swift water, confined space and roof. Swift water has definitely the training that I received here. Lieutenant Smith was the head of our water program when I got hired. It's huge, as one of the water specialists and one of the instructors for the team, I feel like I have an unfair advantage because of the training that I've received with our city and the fact that we have a river that we respond to and get out and train. It's been a huge asset. The remaining pictures are just pictures that I'll just quickly describe. This is from Hurricane Harvey. You're never that far from home, and this, this was my rescuer that's walking alongside. I was the boat operator for the entire mission. We removed a woman from an apartment building that said, what part of Ohio are you from? And I said, well, we're from all over, because most of the FEMA teams come from one large department, like Philadelphia Fire, or Miami, or the city of New York, or Los Angeles City. But we're from all over the state of Ohio. My rescuer was from the Akron area, but I said, I'm from the Cincinnati metro area, I'm from the city of Hamilton. She said, well, I know where that is, I went to St. Ursuline High School, which was pretty neat, in the city of Houston, with all of that, to run into somebody that was, you know, from home, was kind of a neat experience. Next slide, please. These were the slabs from the floors that pancaked at Surfside. The rebar looked like spaghetti. We had number eight, number four rebar all over. It was just, it took, from that position, if you were up on the pile, it would take you a good five minutes to carefully walk down at the end of a work cycle to not have any falls because of impalement being a real, realistic danger. So, next slide, please. This picture I added because it kind of took our breath away when we were looking at it with binoculars, after about halfway through our first day, one of the chiefs for Liberty Township that's on the team, so there was a set of bunk beds up there, and sure enough, they were, and it was right where the building had sheared. We saw beds like this, we had just unbelievable sights, but this was, this was definitely, I think, a very impactful photograph to show, just kind of the devastation, and then the, brought it home, you're sitting there thinking, man, these people were just, you know, in their beds. The building shook, and they had little to no warning. Next slide, please. This is the best squad on Ohio Task Force One. This was Squad Seven, the squad I was assigned to as a rescue specialist. For two weeks, we were already friends, but we really grew together and got closer than, kind of like a band of brothers, not to compare us to those people, but it really became that, because, because of COVID, we were isolated in one room on our cruise ship. They put all the federal teams on a cruise ship because it was the Fourth of July holiday weekend, so there were no hotels to put us in, and because of the air quality, they didn't want us setting up tents close to the rubble pile. So they opened up one of the cruise ships, and they put all five outside of the state of Florida federal teams on that ship. But we would go back, you're in a room by yourself, your spouses, your kids, they're back in Ohio, so we really comforted each other. We went through several traumatic events as far as body recovery every single day. And normally, we don't do that on the fire department. If we have a bad run, you know, that's the only run that we're going to make like that day, and surely not going to repeat that the next day where we come into work. And here, we were doing it multiple times a day, and the next day when we come back to the pile, we would. And the next day, when we'd come back to the pile, we would resume that. Next picture, please. This is a picture of the force of Mother Nature. This is from Dawson Springs, Kentucky. That is an off-road tire on a truck. And if you were to look at it really closely on the inside, you can see where, not only did it go completely through the tire, but it punched a hole on the inside of the frame. Those, those wind speeds were confirmed to be over 200 miles an hour at EF4 storm. So it's kind of an interesting picture when you put something like that on Facebook and people are like, wow, just the, the force of that, that storm. Next. Another picture, this one I included just because there was some Christmas decorations. It became, it wasn't obvious when we first got down there, but everybody started running the math. When we go out the door, we were prepared to go out the door for 14 days. So we have to bring all, any medications that we might be on, enough clothes. It dawned on us that we might be spending Christmas down here, which half of the people were like, my wife's not going to be happy about that. And I'm like, I know, and neither is mine, but it is what it is. We weren't, we were only down there for three full days. And then we were brought home because there was no recovery or rescue needed to be done. It was, we had searched all the areas. Next slide, please. When we came home from Surfside, Governor DeWine and his wife met us at our warehouse, went to probably more than half of us, went down the line, shook our hands, thanked us for what we did representing the state. That was a first for me. I've, I've run into a couple presidents. There was the governor of the state of Florida on the cruise ship that I met. I spent some time as a kid in South Florida growing up, so I made the opportunity to go over there and remind him, hey, I'm, I'm a, I'm a Floridian or an ex-Floridian. I'd like to get a picture with you. But something like this, it's, it's happened more than once, but it's, it certainly is really nice to see the politicians coming that support our team financially and just to know that they care, you know, and understanding the type of mission that we went on. It was, it was really special. This is from the City of Houston. This is I-10. The water level is within four to five feet of the road going over top of it. So to kind of give you an idea of the scale of water dropping, what, what 65 inches of rain does in a flat area, and then all the rivers that went into that. And believe it or not, the, the Texas Rangers that were blocking these interstates with flares still had people trying to drive around it to get down there. And they would get out and say, where are you going? Unless you have a submarine, you can't get through there. You need to turn around, the highway's closed. But this is something you don't see every day, that kind of rainfall, so. While in Miami, I was contacted by a high school friend. I put on Facebook a couple photos. I went to a school with a, a brother and two sisters. Porter Carreros, their, their mother left Cuba in 1967, got a visa to leave Cuba. Carla, the middle child, had contacted me on Facebook and said, oh my God, you're at this building collapse. George, her youngest brother, who's pictured here, right over my, the backside of me, to the left side or to the right as you're looking at it. George's mother-in-law is in condo 411, and she's missing. So I contacted her in the morning and, and reached out to Chief Case from the City of Cincinnati, who's one of our task force leaders, and advised him of what was going on. And I had a friend that was, had a family member in the pile, gave the condo number. He spoke to the representatives from the Israeli team and New Jersey. They didn't find anything. I promised Carla, I said, we're going to be looking. We're not going back to Ohio till we get everybody out. We will find her. We found Margarita, Florida Task Force Two, and with assistance from New Jersey, we're working maybe 20 feet from myself and one of the structural engineers where we were with laser pointers, kind of helping the heavy equipment operators move out debris, larger debris. This individual over here is the chief for Dayton, Chief Landis. He'd come up onto the pile and grabbed me and said, Dave, I believe Florida Two has found your, your buddy's mother-in-law. And they were right within, from here to the door. So I walked over. The rescue squad officer, Nunez, from Miami said, hey, he thought it was my family. He's like, hey, we found your, your family here. Do you want to help remove her? Which I did. I said, yes, I, I want to be a part of that team. So that they bring teams of four up in hazmat, TIVX suits to do that. And helping with that process, I was able to call her that night. She finally answered the phone and said, you can tell George. She, she had a purse on her with her initials, and I had a photograph of Margarita to kind of confirm the, the hair length and the hair color that we had found her. Pretty cool. That's all I can say, pretty cool. The next day, they called, they'd come back from the funeral home. They had conference, positive confirmation from Miami Metro that was, had facilities there on scene by us where they were doing DNA there, that it was Margarita. The family wanted to meet us, they wanted to thank us. I didn't think we'd get them in the port of Miami, so Chief Landis, I asked, I went to him and said, hey, is there any way I could take the Tahoe and go meet them? They're in Kendall, which is south of the city by the airport. He said, absolutely, and I'm going to go with you. So we drove there, got a little bit of a heads up from Carla en route. She said, so you know what you're walking into? George's wife and her sisters are angry. They're not angry with you, but you know, they're angry because they haven't had any information for, at this point, almost two whole weeks before we found her. So we walked in the house. Some look of anger on their face, but a lot of tears. They're crying and, and they invited us in. We sat down, they asked a lot of questions, where we found Margarita, the other two women that were with her. It was important for them to know that Margarita was the last one out of the condo. She let the other two go before her. They felt some comfort by the fact that I was able to tell her that, you know, that she was, she, she was alive and then she wasn't. She didn't suffer, she didn't, she wasn't trapped, she was alive and then she wasn't alive. When we, and they took this photo. Their tears when we left were more of relief that we were able to give them that closure. Since then, I've received a couple different messages from Carla and a couple other friends from schools telling me, you know, I ran into them, you, you'll never know what an impact that you had. She still refers to you and your team as angels for giving them that. I felt like the recovery was an honor. There was no glory down there to be had of rescuing somebody and, you know, making the paper, hey, look what we did. But the, the work we did was very honorable to be a part of that and to, to meet with the family and see that relief from them was one of the highlights of my career, not just with the team, just overall. I, it's hard to put into words what that was that day. This is a picture of, we called them the Green Hornets. That was our nickname for them. This was the Israeli team. But they were around us and they, they were great to work with. They really were. They were, they were very approachable and they had unfortunately a lot of experience with building collapses in the, in the state of Israel. So that was kind of, again, I didn't expect to ever do that in my career. A kind of a cool picture. Lastly, this is a picture of Chief Kaminski from Toledo Fire Department. I think this picture really encompasses a lot. We had a lot of tough periods throughout our days where we would find people, kids, parents, and it was very tough. And we would retreat to the beach and go out to the beach to smoke a cigarette or, or to talk or to comfort. And looking at this picture, I, I feel like it just kind of, it was very surreal at times. You turn around and you would, you would see the devastation and everything around it. But then when you turn a 180, you had the, the beauty of the Atlantic Ocean. And we would walk out there and it was definitely some serenity when, when we needed it. And I think this picture kind of says it all. In closing, I just, I again want to thank the city. It means a lot for your unwavering support to allow me to be a part of this team and the City of Hamilton Fire Department and the support from the department and the chiefs. It means a lot that I've never had to ask for permission. I've always been able to go when needed. So I, I thank you. And you guys were a part of all these missions for supporting myself and Lieutenant Smith and the others that have been a part of this team. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mayor, I really appreciate you allowing Dave to take the extra time to go through this. I thought it was important because the things that not only Dave's done, I mean, just Kentucky, for example, I mean, as an old public safety officer, when that happened, I wanted to go down there. But I can tell you that I felt comfort knowing that a member of the Hamilton Fire Department was responding there for the City of Hamilton going to Kentucky. What all these folks do on a daily basis, I had a Harley-Davidson, and I used to say, if, if you got to explain what it's like to ride one, you, you can't understand it until you do. And I'm going to tell you right now, people may think they know what public safety does and what they go through every day. Unless you do it, you don't have a clue. I'm grateful to these guys, all the members of both departments, Lieutenant Smith. I kind of left out my buddy, Acting Chief Eichelberg, because he is still a member of Task Force One. But really appreciate it to the city, like Dave said, that the training that we receive back for that is, is a huge benefit to the city. So thank you all.
Dave, come on up here. I'd like to have your family come up here, who's here. Chief, come on up here, anybody on Task Force One. I've got a presentation for you. I, I've never had a presentation like that in this room in 12 years I've been there. It was, it was fascinating. I just got to tell you. Wait for your other family to rise up. Come this way. You, you are a professional, compassionate public servant. I've never heard a presentation like that. I have never. People use the word hero, kind of just throwing around a little bit. But you're like a hero in the capital of age. You help people who are going through the worst periods of their life or, or your life city. And I'm just so honored, the council's so honored to give you this proclamation, which is a small token of thank you for what you do, plus you teach, and then that you also learn too. So this is quite an honor for all of us to give you this proclamation. I'm going to read it, these guys may be able to say a few things as well. And anything else you want to say, you can clearly say because that was a fascinating presentation. I bet you there's going to be a lot of people want to watch T.C. Hamilton's replay of this just to learn things that you have gone through and what you've done for the nation. Also, the mayor proclamation. The Hamilton City Council and the administration would like to recognize Lieutenant David Oakley, a man who makes a difference in this community and helps others in desperate need. Whereas David started fire service with Westchester Township in 1996, completed medic school in 1999. Whereas he joined the Hamilton Fire Department on May 5th, 2000, where he continued his training. Whereas David then went on further education himself for the next two years through hazmat school and rescue tech school, learning skills related to road, confined spaces, swift water, ice rescue, auto extrication, machine extrication, structure collapse, tech search, urban rural, and whereas in 2003, he joined Ohio Task Force One, serving one of the nation's top search and rescue teams. Whereas over his career, he has also become team manager of Butler County Rescue, FEMA structural collapse technician, Ohio Task Force One hazmat team manager, and FEMA swift water hazmat specialist trainer. Whereas with his education comes experience, David has served in multiple deployments ranging from Hurricanes Gustav, Ike, Irene, Sandy, Matthew, Harvey, Laura, Delta, Idaho, and the Miami Surfside building collapse. And whereas he's also served those locally driven tornadoes at Dayton in 2019 and in Mansfield, Dawson Springs, Kentucky in 2021. Whereas in addition to his dedicated and life-serving services across the country, David produces tremendous service to his Hamilton community and surrounding communities in need. Therefore, I, and more, Mayor of City of Hamilton, Ohio, and all of Hamilton City Council members, do I recognize Lieutenant David Oakley for his service to our city, our community, and our nation, helping those in desperate need. I wish him well and thank him for his continued service. So myself as mayor. Before we have Dave say a few more words, is anybody else like Chief Mercer or say a few words about, about their...
So not being prepared and certainly that not being the easiest speech to follow, I've worked with Dave since he's been on this job. Dave and I have talked together, Dave and I have talked together, the service that these guys have brought to the citizens. The work that goes into preparing and being prepared, the hardship on the families that say, yes, you can have our father, you can have our husband for two and three weeks at a time. The stress that goes into recovering from that when you come back home. Yeah, we appreciate all of that. Know that the citizens here, when they need that help, people like Dave, people like Ray are the ones that are available to come help us as well. Council has always supported that, without question, without doubt. And that's what fire service is about, is about making sure that the people who need the service get the service. It's about passing on that training, that education, those skills, those capabilities. Working on great men and women for 33 years. I'm just ready right now.
Want to take a comment?
Yeah, I'll say so. Great presentation, Dave. The one thing that I'd like to say though, that this isn't just a City of Hamilton thing. This is a nation, it's a national thing. When America calls, this is who responds. There's 28 task forces, like Dave has said many times. It's a big deal when these guys, task forces, go out the door. It's an order signed by the president, there's a whole process, there's, I think there's over 28 steps just to get the team out the door. So when America calls, this is who they call. They're either one of these 28 teams or all of them. There have been cases where all 28 teams were out at one time. Similar to a big military operation. Great presentation, and it is, it's a heavy price for the families. Thanks, Katie.
You guys want to say anything else? Can you introduce your family because they, they are obviously behind you and...
This is my mother, Linda Oakley. This is my youngest son, Nolan. This is my wife, Katie. My older son, Connor. This is my youngest daughter, Mackenzie, who's from one, Hamilton High. I remember her on the other day, so I'm really proud of her. She didn't get that from me, she got that from her mom. My father, Dave Oakley. And Ray Smith, he was my lieutenant for years and one of my, one of the few mentors that I've had and really my biggest mentor here with the City of Hamilton with rescue and just deployed together. He's helped me through a lot of stuff, personal but also professional. More so professional, I wouldn't be where I'm at today without other individuals that he's been a huge influence on my life. Chief Mercer and Chief Eichelberg and Chief Kermisi, I really appreciate all the support that I've, I've gotten from you guys throughout the years. I can't say it enough, it supports everything, the foundation.
Bless to have you, City of Hamilton. Thank you. Next, we have a special presentation involving our Human Resources Department, an annual update by our Human Resources Director, Jean Pope.
Will you drive for me? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Good to see you all. Appreciate your time. I wanted to first and foremost appreciate the service that Hamilton Fire Department gives us every day, and I'm glad that Lieutenant Oakley gave us the benefit of the information and how he helps others regularly with his rescue missions with the task force. So we're great to support such amazing services. Wanted to start off first with the fact that we have changed from the Civil Service Department to Human Resources by virtue of the charter change that happened recently, and we have increased our... increased our staffing to move forward to our mission of being a concierge service and a true business partner with all the departments. We've added Brittany Chapman as our HR assistant, and we've changed the names and refocused some direction for Jennifer Cox and Rebecca Kermeans, who are HR partners. And we're looking forward to adding another individual to our staff as we are going to be taking over the workers' compensation and benefit leave administration in-house. So, we will need someone to direct that appropriately. Go to the next step. Just want to reiterate that we, as the Human Resources Department, are a true partner. We support all of the ancillary departments or the additional sites that we have. So, whether it is training and information and development, onboarding or offboarding, we are in charge of the entire employment experience. We also are over the Civil Service Commission. Some of the components I wanted to draw your attention to is that last year, we did have a drop off, a slight drop off in applications because of the COVID-ness, if you will. However, and we had 67 of those, right now, with the third week of January, we are at 25 recruitments or applicant requests that we have set out. So, we are already more than halfway through the work that we did last year, and we're looking forward to more. We are growing. We are accessing the public in a myriad of ways and are looking forward to welcoming more great additions to our staff. Looking at our 2021 highlights, wanted to focus a little bit on employee engagement. We regularly want to reach out to our staff members and let them know that they're appreciated. We want to know that they add value on a regular basis, and part of doing that was going out on missions and saying, "Thank you." Some of those missions included the Public Service Awards, which are given to individuals that have gone above and beyond in regards to the values that we adhere to here at the city. Also, recognizing the annual anniversaries of our staff members at the 5, 10, 15, 25, and 30 and 35 year marks, letting them know your service is obviously appreciated. We did holiday hellos with our city manager, Joshua Smith. We went out and took cookies and drove around the city and said, you know, "Thank you for your service." And Joshua got to meet all of, well, he knows all of our staff, you know, but they got to actually have time with him, which was super important. We also recognize our administrative staff personnel. Sometimes they get, you know, a little bit pushed to the side, but it was nice for us to go out and say, you know, "All of the work, all that data entry that you do on a regular basis, we appreciate it. We see it and we acknowledge it." We moved to a 100% virtual online enrollment based on some of the things that happened with COVID. So, what we're trying to do in reference to being a concierge service is making things more electronically available, data accessible for obviously the staff members here in the City of Hamilton, and then advancing or utilizing better the technology that we currently have. We do have a module or a HRIS system called NeoGov. And what we've uncovered over the last couple of years is that we have not utilized it to our best advantage. So, not only are we implementing and staying true to the course as far as performance evaluations, but we are implementing the LEARN module, which allows us to do virtual or remote training. So, we still want to have the quality there of education and increasing people's opportunities for advancement, but additionally, certainly, we want to ensure that we are offering different modalities of training. We also have increased our support to the safety service departments, both police and fire, with recruitments coming more regularly because we don't want to sacrifice quantity for quality. We have two individuals that are in charge of the recruitments. Jennifer Cox and Brittany Chapman, whom she is training, our new individual, our new person on staff, they are in charge of ensuring that the recruitments are widely recognized, marketed, and that they run smoothly, that the chiefs of both departments receive information and statuses as immediately as they can. They are a priority for us. Let's see. We also worked with the Department of Neighborhoods in order to increase the efficacy of our website. We want to ensure that our residents, in addition to persons that are applying, are able to maneuver or navigate the website system. So, we've worked with them on that. I would also like for you to know that in working with our economic development team, our HR department achieved an award from the Ohio Economic Development Association for Excellence in Workforce Development for our work with the CHIPS program. And I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you, because you have supported that steadfastly. Also, to let you know, I got a call two days ago. We had another member be offered a full-time job at 80 Acres. So, the program is continuing to work successfully. Thank you for that. Our CHIPS program is on its fourth cohort, excuse me, fifth cohort. The summer of 2021, we had 22 individuals go through our program. We're super excited about that, and we will begin our spring cohort February 14. We have 14 individuals going through the program. At that time, we have increased our partnership to the surrounding areas, and we have more companies, as we have more companies coming into the area, we definitely want to partner with them as well. The opportunities are endless. I will also tell you that in reference to workforce development, we have created another program. We're not sure on the name as of yet, but it will be based on the same premise as CHIPS, but it will be open up to the locality, all residents of the City of Hamilton. We want to give them information, support, and service to be introduced to the various, excuse me, the various companies that we have here in the City of Hamilton. One of the things that we found out in all of my talks, et cetera, is people don't understand the full breadth of employment opportunities that we have here in the City of Hamilton. So, we have everything from local government administration to biotechnology. You know, there's so many things in between that people have to choose from, and we want to ensure that we help get that information out there. Some of our partners right now in this endeavor, of course, are the City of Hamilton. We have Hamilton City High Schools on board, because we want to give our young peoples, young people, opportunities. We're working with Veterans Affairs. Jessica Harp via our planning and zoning department is giving us assistance in that respect. We're also working with the Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce. Dan knows everyone, so he is connecting us in those special ways. So, we're looking forward to launching that officially in the next couple of months, and it will be a success, because we will make it so. Moving forward, 2020, we're looking at how we can connect better, more often, so that it can be attentional and achieve results. We would like to reinstitute or reestablish our XLMT, so those are the larger team management meetings. It'll be a collaboration of all the supervisors and superintendents, so that we can, you know, cross-reference information. I will be communicating the Workforce Equity Plan that the Diversity and Inclusion Commission came up with in 2021. That will be in February, so I'll see you all again. We want to increase the efficacy of the HR department. I told you, we're looking forward to having a new staff member. It's a, it is a cost-saving and efficacy matter to have everything in-house, okay? Instead of having a company run our leave programs, we can do it at a lower cost again and more efficiently. And then, we can give better care to those people that are having whatever challenges with workers' compensation or that need assistance in benefit administration. That's very important, that personal touch. We'll be continuing to build our annual education models through LEARN, as I discussed with you. And then, we are promoting our exit surveys. We created them last year on our NeoGov platform. We have sent out the information to some of our prior employees, and we're looking forward to that exit interview information coming back in. We want to know what we've done well, what we have done maybe not so well, but more than that, we want to communicate, you know, and receive feedback. Last but not least, I just told you about the Workforce Development Plan. We're looking forward to achieving great success with that onward and upward. Those are just a few tidbits of what you'll see from the amazing HR department that I am so proud to be a part of. And if anyone has any questions, I will take them now.
Any questions?
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Yeah.
You're welcome. It is my pleasure to serve.
Congratulations on the Ohio Development Award. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, your helping out our fellow employees in this building with their benefits and the CHIPS program. Like I said, thank you for your leadership in getting that started and carrying it on.
Thank you, sir. It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If we have one more special presentation, that's with Rich Engel, talking about Amtrak and CSX.
I'll give it to you after the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens of Hamilton. We've done an evaluation of some potential sites for the Amtrak platforms and, go to the next slide. Before I do that, we'll look at the typical platform design. The, one of the information to note is the length needs to be approximately 300 to 400 feet long, adjacent to the tracks, and the platform itself would be a concrete platform, slightly higher than the adjacent rail, about eight inches higher, is what Amtrak would prefer. And then, here's some other typical details related to the platform. For instance, the lighting, there'll need to be ramps for ADA access to the platform, and then also the the shelter elevation, if we so choose to put that on there as well. So, we also looked at what the estimated cost would be, including the preparation of the construction drawings, geotechnical investigation, site work, the platform, sidewalks to the platform, canopy, lighting, and other miscellaneous costs. So, each platform would cost approximately $400,000. This is a very preliminary number, so it may change depending on location. We looked at some different sites. This is at Sims Park. We would locate it on the south side of the tracks, and this would serve the Indianapolis line that goes west to Indianapolis and on to Chicago. We also looked at the north side of the same location, again, at Sims Park. And then, this would be located adjacent to the current city, city parcel that's going to house the relocated train depot, and this would be adjacent to the north-south CX line, CSX line that would connect into the Columbus-Cleveland track. We also have another, this is a site plan of the relocated train depot. The two structures would be located essentially where the paved area is currently adjacent to MLK and south of Maple Avenue. Status update on the train depot. We've advertised for bids for the foundations on January 19. The bids are due next Wednesday, a week from today, February 2. Substantial completion of the foundations is, for the contractor, would be Thursday, March 31, and then the final completion would be mid-April. We would need to have the foundations done and the concrete cured before the, before the structures can be moved and placed on them. So, our tentative move date is somewhere between mid-April and the end of May. We're still in contact with CSX to confirm the request to extend the timeframe for another 60 days beyond the end of March. We're also looking at another location. It would be on the east side of the tracks, between Hanover and Walnut Street. There are city-owned parcels there. There's three CSX tracks, and I'm trying to determine from CSX which of those tracks would actually be used. We would have to have a platform adjacent to the west, I'm sorry, the east tracks and not any of the other tracks. So, if we can't accommodate that, that site would not be appropriate then. That's the end of the presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Real quick question. Platform, there was, you mentioned the shelter, you mentioned the canopy. Those are two different things, I guess. Is that right?
Yeah, they'd be similar. It'd just be essentially a rain roof to protect the passengers while they're getting on, which would be the benefit of the one site where the train depot would be located. They could stay in there until the train arrives, and they could go out and get on the platform. But again, that would only serve the one set of tracks. It would not serve the Indy line.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Will there be parking, like, long-term parking? People could leave a car, or how does that work?
Yes, we would have to have parking available, yes.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be on the site. It could be a garage, or they could walk there, or are we looking onsite?
That's where the site, where the train depot is located, it would provide additional parking available there.
Okay, okay.
And that would serve both sites, both the Sims Park site and the train depot site.
Okay, I was thinking about Sims Park, like, where would you park over there? So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Rich, thank you. With the potential for two platforms, you know, Susan raised an interesting point. I understand we're going to have one point of parking. Now, to get the folks, let's say, if they're getting a ticket and they need to take the train on this platform, I'll just call it Platform Two, going to Indy or Chicago, are we gonna be able to develop some type of special crosswalking mechanism for safe pedestrian crossing over MLK here? I mean, is that in the plans to just maybe revamp some of the crosswalks here?
Yes, we would have to take a look at how the pedestrians would then get across MLK.
Okay.
It's my understanding that that train actually travels in the middle of the night, so traffic may not be the same issue as it would be in midday.
Okay.
Oh, yes, we would certainly look at that. That's not in the current plans, but we would evaluate that at the time.
Okay, that's fine.
Once we get more details.
Great, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, we now go to the consent agenda. That includes all matters such as, oh, sorry, priorities to citizens. I couldn't forget priorities to citizens. My fault. Priorities to citizens. And those which may comment, may comment during this part of the agenda or when the item is up for vote on the council floor. And each person who is speaking is required to sign the public speaking book. We have one person who signed, and that's Jesse Von Stein. Want to come up to the podium, give us your name and your address, and tell us what's going on.
Good evening, folks. My name is Jesse Von Stein. My address is 5421 Wayne Trace Road, Hamilton, Ohio. My visit this evening is informal and preliminary. I kind of came to say hi, so I'll keep it real smooth, real light, and move on down the road. Some of you are aware of some of my adventures, being a local businessman, but one of my adventures is a haunted event, which Mayor Moller is aware of. He's helped us out with that on many occasions. I think you may be aware also. We would do a little event down at the courthouse. My taxman looks like Santa Claus, and I've got a girl that works for me, like Mrs. Claus. And we'd give toys away and food and things of that nature. McDonald's would get involved, but it was a nice community event. Anyway, that was all paid for by a haunted event that I do. Done it for probably 28 years. I've watched what you guys have been doing, and ladies, when I say guys, no disrespect intended. And you're doing a wonderful job. Man, you're doing great things down here. I'm sure there's growing pains. We've got some infrastructure things going on. I'm sure you're dealing with all those. But I had a thought about a year ago with this haunted event. It originally started in Hamilton on the west side, and I... It originally started in Hamilton on the west side, and I, with my other ventures, it moved out of the city of Hamilton. We still do the charity work, but on a different level at this point. But with all the things that are growing, with the spooky new coming in, I've watched how we've added restaurants, and, and you guys, like I said, are trying to do everything you can. I, I get that. With this event that I had, it's a family-type event. I'm a God-fearing guy, not that that's anything important to anybody, just my personal beliefs. To do this event, we do it with a family unit in mind. It's fun, it's neat. There's museum pieces, knowledge, weird knowledge probably at best, but knowledge. I had the opportunity to purchase a building at 235 Ross Avenue. I have purchased that building. I would like to put that event at that building. This would also include some escape rooms. We have the room for four. Now, my knowledge of escape rooms is limited. I'm actually going to a seminar, seminar in March to, to gain some more knowledge with my staff. Anyway, I think it would be a great asset to the city of Hamilton. As I said, you guys are doing a wonderful job, but the family unit thing, I think we need some more. These folks that go to these, all of us that have kids know that you go to a, to an event, and you've got one game at 1:00, and then you've got another one at 6:00 PM, and you're going, "Oh, my God, what am I gonna do? Sit here all day?" So they're gonna bring them down to Main Street, and, and they're gonna hang out, and I think we need something for the family unit. So that's my pitch. Now, as I said, this is informal and preliminary. I have done the footwork, of course, getting it to planning, getting it to zoning, getting it to the historical society. Everybody is aware of what I'm doing. Now, my point for being here. 20 years ago, while I was growing my businesses, I would not have a problem fighting with the local municipality to get what I needed to get done. And when I say fighting, you know what I mean. I'm not there anymore. I wanna be everybody's friend, I don't wanna fight, I don't wanna beat heads. There are certain things with the zoning that are gonna need to be done. If you folks talk to your, your staff, and you talk to zoning, and talk to planning, I think with Mr. Moller, he's aware, and, and I think Mrs. Fear, my reputation speaks for itself. So if I tell you something, that's what I mean, and that's what's gonna happen. So I would like this to be painless, I would like it to be easy. I know there will be obstacles, and we will meet those, all those things we need to do. But anyway, I just wanted to give you a heads up of my plan as it crosses your desk. Please be aware, and if there's anything that you wanna ask me, please do so.
Great.
Any questions, anything?
Any questions at this point in time?
I appreciate the heads up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Von Stein.
Thank you.
And that takes care of the audience of citizens. We go to the consent agenda. That's all, meeting minutes, staff reports, caucus reports, receiving file information, December financial report, December investment report, and an informational report, which a lot of folks may find interesting, and I'm just gonna make a note of it for the TV Hamilton folks, the 2022 concrete repair and resurfacing projects. It is the list of streets. And that list includes streets that are being resurfaced from street levy money, gas tax money, as well as other sources. So I hope that becomes a, an informational report becomes a resource for citizens who wanna look up and see what streets are being used or resurfaced with street levy dollars and the like. So that takes care of the consent agenda. We now go to the committee of the whole, and I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be recessed when the committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second. Motion of the council member Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Excuse me, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We go to the committee of the whole at 7:14. I think there were a couple of items on the caucus agenda which we were gonna have a report on, is that correct, Mr. City Clerk?
So I do have one item on the caucus agenda that'll be presented by Ms. Liz Hayden of our planning department, virtually. I'm calling her right now to have her come through on the phone.
I'm here.
Can everybody hear her through the speaker?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Liz, it's all you.
Thank you very much for letting me participate via Zoom tonight. What we have on the agenda, going second to the theme. So essentially, we kinda have a confusing title tonight, but it is, the goal of this text amendment change in the zoning ordinance is to update the penalty section of the zoning ordinance. And essentially, it's gonna add the ability to use a civil, create, to utilize a civil penalty route, which in certain circumstances will be a more effective route for us to go when we are having issues with somebody not in zoning compliance. And that's the summation of my report. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions at all? And that's the one that we have for, for the whole, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
At some point in time, Mr. Mayor, if we could have a, about the Great Miami Brewing Company, an update on that would be good, if you could do that. Not tonight, but at some point in time, and then...
Do you want me to address Mr. Von Stein's comments about the church or not?
I, I'm just gonna go through the process, but if you want to make a comment about it, please go ahead.
Well, I just, I wasn't sure if it was appropriate. I didn't wanna do it when he was here, but he doesn't own the church, it's not in Soul Jet, and it still has the, he's been talking to her zoning, and they pulled him without parking with the change of use, it would probably not be allowed. My sense is, he was here tonight basically asking council to supersede the zoning process. So I just wanna make sure that you're aware of that early on, so...
There is a process.
Okay.
But Joshua, this is the building, like, across from the funeral home, right? On Ross and D?
Before we continue, is there anything else needed by Ms. Hayden?
No, nothing, nothing to her, she, no. Any, any, no questions for her? At this point in time?
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
You're free to go, thank you.
At some point in time, Great Miami Brewing, we may wanna give a report on that. And then, are we gonna have a presentation at some time about our customer experience initiative? We heard a little bit, a couple weeks ago, I think, but at some point in time, those two, I thought, might be interesting for, for council. Okay, that's...
Mr. Mayor?
Please, yes.
Can I ask one question about number 11, about We Love It 2 and the liquor permit? Just a little bit of information on what's going on there?
Yeah, she is applying for, I believe it's a C-2 this time around, it's a carryout permit. She'll just be able to sell wine by the bottle, and it'll be served in, inside, you can basically buy it and take it out. But eventually, she will work to a D-5 license, which she would have more like a wine bar. But this is just a C-2 license.
Okay, so it's just wine, closed bottle?
Closed bottle, carryout.
Carryout, okay, thank you.
Question. Any other questions, any other issues on the caucus agenda for which anyone has a question or this time? All right, I'll set the motion that the committee of the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Ryan, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Time is 7:18, so we close the committee of the whole. I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote to reconvene a regular meeting.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
And then I'll set the motion that the council received reports of the consent agenda and concur on their recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Public hearing, I'll set the motion, public, excuse me, I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be recessed, and the public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We go into the public hearing at 7:19. I'm gonna read that into the record, please.
A public hearing regarding amending the city of Hamilton zoning ordinance by amending Section 1800 Residential Design Standards and Section 2400 Planned Development Regulations.
Okay. Any audience which should be heard at this public hearing involving the amendment of our zoning ordinance under the sections Residential Design Standards and Planned Development Regulations? Anyone in the audience which should be heard at this public hearing? Anybody sign the book at all? There's no one really else here, except I think our city professionals, except for Mr. Cannell, just a professional school personnel. Okay, I'll set motion, or is there any comments on council before there's a motion made? Okay, so your motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign. Hearing none, the public hearing is closed at 7:20. I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
The regular meeting is reconvened at 7:21. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items, and I'll set the motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the note be, that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We go into pending legislation, agenda item number 13, which is a second reading ordinance involving regarding renewable energy credits.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section 927.01E regarding renewable energy credits, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion or comments about this particular ordinance? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
Thank you. We now go to agenda item number 14, which is a second reading of an ordinance involving acquisition by the city of Kemdine.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to take certain actions in connection with the acquisition by the city of Hamilton, Ohio of the former Kemdine Corporation site known as parcel numbers P643101300009, P643101300011, and P643101300012, presently owned by the state of Ohio and parcel numbers P643101300006, P6431000007, and P643101300008, owned by the Kemdine Corporation, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion or comments on this one? Roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
We now go to new legislation, agenda item number 15, which is two readings of emergency ordinance involving some real property in town.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase-and-sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 215 South 7th Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Olmstead Properties LLC, property owner, city of Hamilton, purchaser, first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title?
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Thank you. Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase-and-sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 215 South 7th Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Olmstead Properties LLC, property owner, city of Hamilton, purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Comments, questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 16, which is first reading of emergency ordinance involving some property at High Street and 10th Streets.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement and related actions related to certain real, certain property located in and around the northeast corner of High Street and 10th Street, city of Hamilton, seller, 10th Street Holdings LLC, purchaser, first reading.
Thank you. Number 17 is a first reading of an ordinance involving a utility economic development agreement.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a utility economic development agreement with ThyssenKrupp Bilstein of America Incorporated, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 18, first reading of an emergency ordinance involving real property located in the Hamilton Enterprise Park.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at Hamilton Enterprise Park, city of Hamilton, seller, WS Properties LLC, purchaser, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 19, which is a resolution involving a real property tax abatement and enterprise zone agreement.
A resolution authorizing and directing the execution of an enterprise zone agreement with WS Properties LLC relative to real property tax abatement.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fear?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion about this particular motion? Roll call vote, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 6-0.
Go to the agenda item number 20, which is a resolution involving a job creation and tax credit agreement.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a job creation and tax credit agreement with Vinyl Max LLC specifying the conditions of a non-refundable credit against taxes on income earned by said company.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Pullman. Any discussion, questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Go to agenda item number 21, which is a resolution about enterprise zone agreement.
A resolution authorizing and directing the execution of an enterprise zone agreement with ThyssenKrupp Bilstein of America Incorporated relative to real property tax abatement.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Vaughn, second by vice mayor Ryan. Any discussion or comments? I just want to thank the economic development department and all who got these expansions and new money being put into these really good corporations on our, in our city who are, are expanding, so thank you, Jody, and thank your team and the folks that you partnered with. Okay, any other discussion or comments? Then on number 21, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
We go to agenda item number 22, which is a resolution involving a job creation and tax credit agreement as well.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a job creation and tax credit agreement with ThyssenKrupp Bilstein of America Incorporated specifying the conditions of a non-refundable credit against taxes on income earned by said company.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Second. Motion by council member Vaughn, second by vice mayor Ryan. Discussion, comment? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Okay. We now go to number 23, which is first reading of an ordinance involving those zoning ordinances we've been talking about.
An ordinance amending the city of Hamilton zoning ordinance by amending section 1800 residential design standards and section 2400 planned development regulations, city of Hamilton applicant, city of, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 24, which is a resolution involving the Rossville Flats project.
A resolution accepting the donation of real property from the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio to the city of Hamilton and authorizing the city manager to enter into a donation agreement for said property related to the Rossville Flats project, 24 and 30 North D Street, 316, 324, 326, 330, and 334 Main Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Vaughn, second by council member Pullman. Any discussion about this resolution? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
We now go to agenda item number 25, which is a resolution involving the side lot program.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners as side lots, 1717 and 1719 Pleasant Avenue, 417 Milliken Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, second by council member Fear. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Now get to agenda item number 26, which is a resolution appointing some folks to the ordinance review commission.
A resolution appointing Peter Acuff and Christina Latta-Landafield to serve on the ordinance review commission of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, for the term commenced in January 1, 2022, and terminating, terminating December 31, 2022.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Fear.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Fear, second by council member Lauer. Any discussion or comments on this one? Just want to say I thank these folks for, for volunteering to, to join ordinance review commission, I think Peter's already on it, is that correct?
He's been on it.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
We go to agenda item number 27, which is a resolution involving a brown, brown remediation program.
A resolution authorizing, directing, and supporting the filing of an application to the state of Ohio to participate in the Brown Field Remediation Program Fund.
Mr. Mayor. Council member Pullman.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
The council member Pullman, second by council member Fear. I've got a question about this, is Brownfield, is that a grant or is it a loan these days?
In this particular case, we're, we're going up here on grant.
Okay. Used to be all, for a long time it was just grants, then was it just loans? And now is it a combination of both, is that the way it's going right now?
There's a couple of different programs.
Okay, great, this is a grant program. Okay, great. Any other questions or comments about number 27? Roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Thank you, we now go to audience of city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, have a couple items to update council on. One of them is a story, I was at the Kiwanis Club of Linnenwall today doing a presentation, and the Anthony Wayne came up, and speaking of former mayor Anton, who just recently passed, someone that was at the Kiwanis meeting was telling me that they were going to demolish the Anthony Wayne at one point because they thought the building was full of asbestos, and the Antonins went down to find the person that did the original plaster, and they said it was horsehair that was mixed with the plaster and it was not asbestos. And that is how they saved the Anthony Wayne, that was a story I had never heard before, but just wanted to say that since we were honoring former mayor Ann Anton earlier this evening. Just a couple of quick updates, you're going to see many piers installed over at the Rossville Flats site in the next coming weeks for the foundation. Also learned at the Kiwanis Club meeting today that apparently the former Champion Office Building, which is now where Barclays is located, was also built on piers because that was a former landfill. So it sounds like the same technology that was used to build that building will be similar to what is being used for the Rossville Flats, and again, you'll, you should start seeing those piers going in probably in the next two to three weeks. Had a conversation with the owner of Spooky Nook earlier this morning, B Street should be back open to the public in April or May, I know that'll make a lot of the traveling public happy, a little happier, so looking forward to get that street back open. I know that we had talked about doing a midterm state of the city, maybe in April of this year, just wanted to put that back on the mayor's radar and see if we can get, sit down and get that organized, I think there's a lot of things that happened since the October state of the city, so it'd be a fun event to get that pulled off. And finally, just wanted to mention that the mayor and I were able to, to participate last Friday with 80 Acres, they had the prime minister of the Bahamas and an entourage of business people, botanists, and some government officials that were in town visiting with 80 Acres, as 80 Acres looks to continue to expand their footprint, not only here in Hamilton, but also globally, so that was a, a great event, and certainly appreciated Mike Zelkin, the CEO of 80 Acres, and Tisha Livingston, who is the CEO of 80 Acres, to include us in that event. But that's all, thank you.
Great. Audience of city council, I just want to say a couple things, that event at 80 Acres with the Prime Minister of the Bahamas was truly historic. I never thought I'd be sitting on a council, we'd be visited by the prime minister of the Bahamas. That was, it was just a neat event. Minister of Agriculture was there, there was a plane full of people there from the Bahamas, and one gentleman who was born in the Bahamas and, and came here, go to grad school, I think at Miami University, named Mark Daniels, he now works for the, for an agricultural business down in the Bahamas, and it was just a really special event. Ann Antonin, a lot of the homes that you see in Rossville, there's a lot of the commercial buildings in Rossville and elsewhere, she saved with her own money or through organization like chaps and the like. She and her, her husband, Jay Antonin, are the reason why we've got two arched bridges in this city. I remember Jay Antonin taking me, he passed, passed away before Ann, and his wife did, but between the Blackstreet bridges, he goes, look at this bridge, this arch is here because of the Romans, this and that, and I, I got an education from him about the importance, the uniqueness, the artistic, you know, aesthetics of, of a, of a bridge which has arches, so, because of the Antonins, we've got a lot of positive things in this town. Okay, any other comments or anything else by city council before I got a question for vice mayor Ryan?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I want to address Hamilton City Schools and our families in Hamilton, who have students who attend Hamilton City Schools. Unfortunately, we were forced to switch to remote learning, it was an essential but difficult decision that had to be made by our leadership and that it was essential and it was good for us. However, I do want to mention the last four day, the, the four days last week were very successful, and I can't give enough thanks to the teachers and the support staff, the aides. This is amazing number to me, when we started, we were ahead of the curve with the pandemic and online learning, we had over 84% daily attendance for participation, and that is far and above what it was before. We had a great plan, we implemented it, in two days, we implemented it, put it out there, and our kids did a great job with this. The other thing that Mr. Holbrook spearheaded, when the pandemic started, we served meals to the kids, we served, in four days, we served 1,800 meals to kids, and that was with our lunch ladies, our parapros, our custodial staff was able to get in and sanitize the buildings, and so now we're able to have extracurricular activities as well now, so it was just a great job from our whole city, 84% participation, and I can't say enough about that number.
And that's, that's a, a great report on, on how the school board handled the situation quickly and successfully, so, great. Any other comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I wish I could have said this earlier, but I was kind of overwhelmed and choked up a little bit on Lieutenant Oakley's presentation, in two years I've been here, it has to be the absolute best one I've ever seen. The pictures kind of reminded me, when he was in the debris and everything, is, of a moment that changed my life is 9/11, and seeing the debris and everything, and since that day, I've flown a flag at my house every day, never take it down, keep it lit up, I always wear a flag, and that kind of, I don't think I've felt that gut feeling in a long time. In today's world where we have fictional characters of movies, of superheroes, and everybody follows them, they need to look around and look at our heroes that are the policemen and the firemen, and it's just amazing what they do, and it was a great presentation, so, I really appreciated that today. I wish I could have said it then, but I don't know if I would have made it through it, so...
Mr. Mayor, I...
Please.
I, I thought the same thing, I was so moved by that, what he said, and, and it's one thing for what the, the safety services do to go in and try to save injured people, but when you know that you're going in to pull out the remains of someone that is so special to their families, to be able to do the things that he did, I mean, that is God's work, it really is. And, and then to follow up on something Scott Scormeese said, our safety service is just the most tremendous, and when I first got on council several times, I rode with police and fire because you cannot, like Scott said, you cannot have any idea what they go through until you ride with them, and to, and they're in areas that, you know, as a parent, I would tell my kids, don't ever drive in that area, I don't care if you go twice as long, there's just certain places that you stay out of, that's where they're all the time, and, and the dignity and respect that they show every single citizen under any circumstance, I just cannot say enough about our safety services. So Scott, thank you so much for bringing all this to our attention and, and allowing him to let us know what really is important in life.
Any other comments? I, again, you can't thank that gentleman enough, the thing is, he is, he's experiencing things, and then he's teaching others, so he's, he's teaching those who are going to be, long after we're gone, he's going to teach them how to handle rescue and recovery situations, so he's a, truly a hero. Before I ask vice mayor Ryan to give us his Bengals update, and about what he's done, and thank you for what you've done, he's helped generate so much in this city as far as turning it orange, there's a really cool sign that's sitting around here on the floor that says resurfacing supported by Hamilton Streets Living. That's a great sign, very educational, and I think the Streets Living Committee and the entire city team should be proud of each one of those signs that goes up because got it done.
Just put this there for a second, but I was looking for this sign, I was going to talk about it, I didn't find it, but there it is, but we've been getting questions about what streets have been resurfaced or are going to be resurfaced, so the streets are resurfaced with Street Lovey funds, this sign is going to go up just to give the public an indication, the presentation I provided to the Kiwanis Club today, a lot of it was about the Street Lovey update, that's why I sent it to council so you'd have that at the for your records, for your files, but this, this was an idea that came up late last year, so those signs will start appearing throughout Hamilton over the next couple of years.
Thank you. I think it's a, it's just great so citizens can see where their tax dollars are going, sometimes they have a question, they don't get answers, but I think we've been very open, we've given answers, and this is also a visual answer, which I think is great. Okay, vice mayor Ryan.
Before I give the Bengals update, forgive me, I, I'd like to circle back around to, to the Amtrak, and, and forgive me, I should have brought these comments up then, I just say Rich and Joshua, thank you very much for the work you guys are putting into this project, we've been working on this thing for, it looks like the better part of a year now, it, it seems, and to think what kind of beast we were getting ready to tackle, and look at where we're going, we just reviewed plans for two, two platforms that are going to be another gateway to this city. What's more special about this, I took it upon myself to call state rep Sarah Cruthers and Senator Lang because at this point in the game, now the state needs to get involved to get these plans going so we can get the trains coming through town again, and they are 100% behind this initiative, they're excited for the city, and they are going to go to bat for us, so, and I'll be approaching the schools tomorrow night, I got a unique idea to get the students involved with this process too, so stay tuned, but I just want to say thank you, this is a great initiative for the city, it's going to be monumental when we get this going, and extremely exciting times for the city.
Look forward to them, the representatives and Senator partnering with us as that unfolds, as the, the Amtrak and the depot unfolds. Okay, Bengals update.
Bengals update, well, Hoot Day, all day, Mr. Williams, we are the Scarf Brothers tonight, sir, orange and black. Sunday's a very special day, and it's so special, unofficially, we're going to label Sunday as Bengals Day, D E Y, in the city of Hamilton. I encourage, along with the mayor and, and council, show those stripes, get those claws out, wear that black and orange, let's root this team, let's show this team that we care, we're going to win, we're going to go to Kansas City, and we're going to wipe them all over the, all over the field, so...
Why you clean that?
Going to recruit Browns fans too, Green Bay fans.
What we're encouraging our residents, show those stripes, wear that black and orange, hoping the schools can encourage the students to, and the teachers and staff to, to wear the black and orange the rest of the week. I got all kinds of orange lights and spotlights on my house, if you drive down Orient Way, I mean, you're going to pick out my houses probably as bright as a koozie here, so I'm sure my wife appreciates, appreciates that. But we got some sculptures lit up, I talked with the fitting center, they're going to be, turn on some orange lights for us.
You have waited for this your whole life.
I, I haven't slept all week, I'm so excited about this, so unofficially, Sunday is Bengals Day in the city, it's time to get excited and love seeing everything going on around, around the state, Sunday, the Bengals are America's team.
So when we win this game, then we'll make the next one official.
Yes.
We will do that.
We will do that.
Now, Rich Engel, you're a Bengals fan now, aren't you?
I haven't decided yet.
Daniel Tiedemann, you're a Bengals fan now.
I like Ohio teams.
Oh, so diplomatic.
Very diplomatic.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll jump on board the bandwagon after they beat the Chiefs, and then they'll go, oh, we're a Bengals fan for, for two weeks at least. All right, anything else? Thank you for the report, thanks for helping generate interest in the Bengals around here, in the Bengals around here, and, uh, those who haven't been around here since like, you know, weren't here around nineteen eighty-eight and eighty-two, don't know what this will be like if we get to the Super Bowl, you think it's kinda crazy now, just wait.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Do you want to share what council's doing with Overland Park in Kansas?
Sure, um, so at ten thirty on Sunday night, I get this email, and of course, I wasn't really reading them at ten thirty too much, but I read it about twelve thirty AM the next day, Overland Park, Kansas, uh, wanted to wager a bet with us, and that had to do with the fact that they're the second largest city around the Kansas City area, and they must've done their homework, pretty quick, I guess, because they found out that we're the second largest city next to Cincinnati, and there are a hundred and ninety thousand people, I believe.
Hundred ninety-seven.
We're sixty-three thousand, but we're sixty-three thousand, much more hungry fans, better fans, but I found this gentleman, the mayor of Overland Park, Kansas, is just a super nice guy, I sent him the information, he goes, I wish I had a river in my city.
Yeah.
But a fine gentleman, uh, just recently elected as mayor, but he's been on council since like two thousand and five or something, there are some similarities, they just refurbished, I think, a downtown park, and I said, hey, our Markham Park is, 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 is great, but they've been just fun people to deal with, he had a great video, we just did our video, um, we didn't have any kind of dancing Bengals singing Hoo Day, but, uh, we did, we did a pretty good job spanning our city, now if they win against Kansas City, uh, he knows, he might hear us sing, I, I don't know, it could happen maybe, but, uh, but again, Overland Park, great city, uh, I think they're a, a much younger city than we are, made a challenge to us, if we win the game, we get barbecue from some really tremendous places I've heard, however, uh, if we happen to lose, we've got, uh, twelve Richard steak sandwiches, six bottles of Neil's sauce, and a case of water going to Overland Park and a park in a pear tree, but, uh, it's a lot of fun, I'm, I'm glad that they reached out to us, and I just think is this gonna be, it's gonna make the game even more interesting.
Sure.
Uh, but thanks for bringing it up, Councilmember Vaughn, because it's, it has been fun, and I, um, that, I mean, I even thought that if we win and we eat that barbecue, we could bring Evan McPherson up, uh, that's an Evan McPherson, is that correct, come up here to eat with us maybe, or whatever, but we'll find some Bengal, or former Bengal to help us eat that barbecue, I think, and it'd be a lot of fun.
Actually, that was my question, I was gonna say, where are we going to eat this barbecue at, because I've already decided we've got it, so.
Okay, we gotta think about that, it's a really good idea.
That's a question, we'll vote on that, so.
We will, uh, be involved in eating that barbecue.
There you go.
And, uh, it's exciting, uh, to be involved in this event, and I hope, and the Browns, maybe one of these days, who knows, I'm a, I'm a Browns fan when they're not playing the Bengals, and it doesn't affect the Bengals, but, but no, thanks for bringing it up, uh, have fun this weekend watching the game, thank you, TV Hamilton, for being, uh, helpful